There are many ways of doing business today. Call centers, mobile apps. But when it comes to what really matters, our way is pretty simple. To be there when you need us most. That's the quality of your independent agent. And the company that stands behind them.
Or Insurance in Dublin is your local independent auto owner's insurance agency.
Wow, we got a nice crowd here tonight. Y'all must have heard I was standing in for the mayor. We got a full agenda tonight, too. I think he knew what he was doing when he decided he was gonna be out of town tonight. But we're delighted to have everybody here. The first order of business tonight, we've got a very special presentation and I'll call Fire Chief Matthew Cutler to come up. He's gonna make some comments and presentations tonight to honor some folks.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, council, city managers, everyone in attendance. Wanted to share with y'all the events of 304 West Moore Street as shown in the picture here. Can I have Sergeant Stan Garrett? Sergeant Jamie Bridges? Sergeant Tyler Williamson? And Lieutenant Stacy Sapp? And it actually worked out pretty well because the shift that was on the night of this incident is actually filling the back of the room here. But what happened at this residence on May 14th, 2018, Sergeant Stan Garrett was responding to a call in the area of H Street for a disturbance. While en route to that call, he noticed smoke coming from a house on West Moore Street. He immediately turned around at the intersection of Church and Moore to investigate, and Sergeant Garrett's instincts were correct. The residence at 304 West Moore had heavy smoke coming from it. He immediately requested the fire department as he checked to see if anyone was in the house. He encountered one male subject outside that told him there were more people inside. Sergeant Garrett, realizing the fire department had just been notified now, when this, this is the picture of when we arrived. So this was before, before we had got there. But he realizing that the fire department had just been notified, no one had called 911. He had to do something. So he did, with disregard for his own personal safety, he assisted the residents out of the burning house, one who was physically disabled and uses a walker to get around. Sergeant Garrett successfully evacuated everyone prior to the arrival of our fire units, which were on scene in just over two minutes. So this is the picture of what these folks saw when they got there. So I submit to you that if Sergeant Garrett had not taken the actions that he took on that evening, we would have had a serious fire injury, civilian fire injury, or possibly a fire fatality. So I'd like to personally thank him for going above and beyond the call of duty. I have this plaque that says, "Dublin Fire Department presents this commendation to Sergeant Stan Garrett for rescuing victims from a burning house on May 14th, 2018 at 304 West Moore Street." All right, next up, we'll talk about Sergeant James Bridges and Sergeant Tyler Williamson. Sergeant Bridges, he started with our department in 2007, was promoted to sergeant in 2013, became a fire investigator in 2013. Sergeant Williamson, he came to our department in 2009, promoted to sergeant in 2014, and became an investigator in 2015. These two, these two fire investigators were on scene, on duty at the time of the fire. They conducted their, their regular firefighting duties as far as searching for occupants, assisting with extinguishment and ventilation. And after that, they switched into investigation mode. They determined the area of origin and interviewed a young man whose room in which the fire had started. The story did not match up with what they were seeing and what they were being told. And something just did not set well with them. So they requested that I respond to the scene and assist in the investigation. So from there, we ended up requesting the, the police department to, to come and, and look at the scene with us. And so what we ended up with was with a, a young man was interrogated and ended up confessing to that arson. So I've got, got commendations for Sergeant James Bridges for identifying an incendiary fire that led to the confession and arrest of an arsonist on May 14th, 2018 at West Moore, 304 West Moore Street. And then Sergeant Tyler Williamson. He also is being commended for identifying an incendiary fire that led to the confession and arrest of an arsonist on May 14th, 2018, 304 West Moore Street. But I'm commending them for seeing this fire for what it was and not taking the easy way out because they could have just said, "Well, it's undetermined" or it's exactly, or gone along with what the young man said. So I'd like to thank them for that. Last but not least, we've got Lieutenant Stacy Sapp with Dublin Police Department Investigations. He was the on-call investigator that responded to the fire. Once we established we had a person of interest, Lieutenant Sapp responded. He interviewed that subject and ultimately got a confession for setting that fire. Lieutenant Stacy Sapp, commend you for investigating and interrogating a suspect that led to the confession and arrest of an arsonist on May 14th, 2018, 304 West Moore Street. But I believe in giving credit where credit is due. It was through the, through the teamwork of the fire department and the police department that we ended up solving this case and, and got the confession and, and got the, got the person that was responsible for it. As I drove home that night, I thought about how this could have gone so much differently. If Stan hadn't have turned around, if investigators hadn't saw what was not what was being told. We could have just sent that young man with his family because he intentionally set that fire. We could have sent him to the hotel with his family and he could have struck again. So thank you, Mayor and Council, for your support for both of our departments. Thank you.
Not only did I solve this fire, the investigation they done and the statements they took, also the young gentleman set a house fire on 441 South in Burdish Prejudice Residence down also, which he did confess to.
Great job. Thank you all so much.
Georgia Military College is a two-year associate's degree granting institution. We are an open admissions college. What that means is, all you need to do is have a high school diploma or GED to get accepted into GMC. We offer several associate's degree programs, including business administration, pre-nursing, psychology, criminal justice, as well as education. We offer classes during the morning, evening, and at night. We even offer some weekend classes. We offer online classes as well as in-seat classes. Whatever is convenient for you and your schedule. We are located at 200 South Jefferson Street in Dublin, Georgia. If you want a great education with small class sizes, affordable tuition, we would love to see you here. Stop by to see us or give us a call. Start here, go anywhere. Georgia Military College, Dublin campus.
Too often, I think we take our public service people for granted and, you know, they're always out there working for us and put their lives on the line. So we're so thankful for our police and fire department, all those who serve the city. Next item, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the May 17th council meeting minutes. Council, you have read those minutes. Do I have a motion to approve? All right, Councilman Davis made the motion. And Councilman Jones? Seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, y'all have seen the bills for over $3,000. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion we pay the bills?
I've got a motion and a second. That we pay the bills. Any discussion? Being done? All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. All right, purchases over $3,000. Mr. Jones, would you describe that for us?
Got one purchase for professional service for the inspection of our elevated water tanks. We've got six big water tanks around the city. Very important to keep them up to date and working well. So one of them is, was built in 1935 over on Elm Street. So it takes a lot of upkeep on them. They last virtually forever if you'll take care of them. We had three bids, one from the company that is doing it now and two others. The two low bids were within about $4,000 a year of each other. The low bid came in from American Tank Maintenance. The second low bid, we do not recommend and accept. They are the second low bid. The low bid, we do not recommend taking in this case. There's about, like I said, about $4,000 a year difference. But we have been not satisfied with that company. So we would, staff recommends we take the second low bid from American Tank Maintenance.
All right, we've heard Mr. Jones to give the description. What's the pleasure to council?
Make a motion we accept.
Motion by Mr. Griggs and a second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion?
Let me just say, that's $4,000 out of a $700,000 contract. So it's, it's very close.
I'll go ahead and say that normally we do take low bid, but this is one of those where we weren't satisfied with the work. And it's not just a recent thing, it's gone on for a while. So the change needed to be made. I think we voted already, so, we have not voted yet. So let's take a vote. All in favor? Opposed? All right, motion carried. Keep me straight. Okay, first, next item on here is a presentation by our Chamber of, or Development Authority head. So come on up here, state your name for the record and make us a good presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. I'm Brad Lofton. I'm the president of the Dublin Lawrence County Development Authority. And I'm honored to be here and I thank you guys for allowing me some time on your agenda. I asked Mayor and I asked Lance. And Mr. Mayor Protam, if I may, I have a few extra minutes because I've got some good news to tell you and a lot of, lot of interesting statistics and want to bring you up to speed. I haven't been here in about a year, so I'm honored to be back. And I want to start by telling you guys how much we appreciate you and your support of our economic development program. Not just in your funding, guys, but in the way that you work your utility infrastructure, the way that you align all of your services to support our efforts, the way that you support our new industrial properties. I can go on and on and on and on. And I just am grateful to you. I'm proud to have my chairman here with me tonight. I know I could speak for him and tell you how much we are honored to work so closely with this council and to thank you for all you've done for us. Valmere dedication, a couple of months ago, the governor was here. I know some of you were able to attend. And the governor, from the podium in front of everybody, said that when he goes around the state and he talks about economic development, he looks at Dublin, Georgia as being a community that sets the gold standard for economic development. And I was very honored to hear that. On behalf of our elected officials and our volunteers and our leadership, that's high praise coming from the governor of Georgia. And I can tell you guys, we couldn't, you guys deserve all the credit. Our board of directors of volunteers, so much, many hours of their time and our elected officials that fly in formation with us has meant the world of difference to us. So we, we just want to tell you thank you for that. I've got some statistics that I could share with Lance, with, with all of you, however you'd like for me to provide it, that I think you could use with your, some of your constituency. We're gonna be putting in a letter to, op-ed to the Courier-Herald to give some additional facts. But if I may, I want to share a couple of those with you. Current unemployment rate as of March 2018 is 5%. That's Lawrence County. So the state of Georgia's unemployment rate is 4.3%. So we're, we're gaining on the state's unemployment rate. The state dropped 0.1% last month. And Lawrence County in one month dropped 0.5%. So very, very strong. A lot of new jobs are coming online. 14.6% unemployment in 2011 versus 5% unemployment in 2018. So our community has come a long, long way in, in creating jobs for those, our folks. So I hope you'll share that with your, with your constituency. This is my favorite stat I want to share with you tonight, guys. Our per capita income, which basically means the standard of living we're setting for the folks in our community. Our per capita income has risen by 20% since 2009. That's significant. And just to give you those numbers specifically, in 2009, our per capita income was 29,0014. In 2018, that has risen to 34,611. So we want to, we think you should judge economic development not just by new jobs and tax-based increase, but also how are those jobs? Is it helping people have a better life? And, you know, I think that's good news. Our per capita income has gone up 20% in five years. So I hope you'll be able to share that with your constituents, too. Since 2012, the Development Authority has announced 1,200 new jobs. And the good news is, many of those jobs aren't promises anymore. They're, they're W-2 jobs. So we, we're glad to report that, too. The last couple of years, our team has, has been focusing on master planning new industrial sites, on getting Valmere Glass up and operational. Today, they're the largest manufacturer in Dublin. 380 new jobs as of March of 2018. So the West Rock's got about 350, Flex Steel has about 330, YKK's got about 345. Today, Valmere has 380 new jobs that are W-2 in place today. So we've been working on that for the last couple of years. We've had a workshop and a strategic plan with our board. We have a new strategy for the airport. We've got 109 acres out there now. We're going to be focusing on 30,000 to 50,000 square foot projects, putting them out at the airport and reserving our new 330-acre site on 257 for larger rail-served projects. So you guys will see a new push from us to try to place smaller projects on the 109-acre site out at the airport, which I understand is served by the city and is a good location. So as an administrative update, 2017 audit, we had, it's back, we provided to the city. We had no findings. We're ending this fiscal year under budget with our expenses and over budget with our revenue, which is always good on both sides. We were able to sell a little bit of property this year. We had a bond commission from YKK, which we get certain periods of time. And so in the past 26 months, our board has sold the former Lytec building on Waldrop Avenue, if you guys are familiar with that area, and also the Confederate Packaging Building to Sunshine Mills, which is growing and adding jobs, and they're a pretty big employer now. So, so we own two buildings today. We still own the, the Rockwell Building on Industrial and we own the Denex Emissions Building on Waldrop Avenue. So we're trying to get out of the building business and when we do, we eliminate any liability for the taxpayer and we put that burden on the backs of the companies that then owned the building. So we got a strategy to continue to do that. Let's see. We are refinancing the Denex building. Lance has been a part of that, helping us do that. You guys have been aware of that. We've got a new Capital City Bank loan. We'll be closing hopefully in the next five to 10 days to refinance that. And so we, like I said, we've got two, two buildings we own today in addition to roughly 1,000 acres of available industrial property. So on the marketing front, I'm sad to have to tell you, she's here tonight, actually. We lost our marketing public relations director. She did a great job for the community. She's a, is a product of Dublin High School. Grew up here, went to University of Georgia. We stole her, came back and served us for about three and a half years. We're now looking full-time for a new marketing public relations director. If you know of anybody, we, we're gonna advertise in the Courier-Herald over the weekend and we put it out on Facebook, trying to get the reach out to anybody you know. Please, please let me know. We have 2,500 people that follow us now across the country on our social media platform that Beatrice helped us develop. So today, any company that has job openings, instead of having to go through the Department of Labor, they come through us. We advertise to 2,500 direct followers on our social media and then they spread it out to over 10,000 to 20,000 people. So we're providing that service to existing industries and manufacturers. And so on the recruitment side, we haven't had to do a lot of recruitment lately with Valmere and with a lot of other activity going on. We were in China last year as a finalist for $2 billion projects, 1,000 jobs. The mayor went with us on one trip. And our team was also in Europe last year on another $300 million project that we were second place on. So we, we were that close to three projects of 500 to 1,000 job impact on the community. So disappointing, but we're gonna continue to, you can't swing and hit a grand slam unless you're in the batter's box. We're gonna keep swinging and we're gonna continue to work hard to make that happen. So we did work with an international company that has purchased the Mohawk building. They're looking at 300 new jobs. And so hopefully you'll be hearing some more of that information coming soon. We do know now that Valmere is up. They, they're fully staffed, almost, that it's time that we, we continue to get aggressive now with new leads. We've asked our board to allow us to attend two trade shows this year. We're gonna go to two shows. We've purchased a list of 1,500 CEO, 15,000 CEOs that we're contacting and trying to cold call. So this, we're gonna have to transition now into being more aggressive on the lead generation and getting more prospect activity. We're working hard with the College and Career Academy. I know this council has supported that concept. When you got 5% unemployment, workforce continues to be our number one biggest challenge and our biggest opportunity. We gotta keep encouraging our young folks to, to go into high-skilled manufacturing as a potential career. And so I'm proud to say we're making progress. Our Career Academy this year has 65 kids signed up for welding. And that's huge. Starting to make some strides in that. And it is our, it is our biggest challenge. I want to close with this, guys, if I could. When you consider your annual funding, I know you guys are always hard pressed. You have limited resources. We, we want, we want you guys to think about economic development as an investment. And, and we hope that we've provided that return for, for the community, working hand-in-hand with you guys. We're not aware of anything else this council can invest in and expect a reasonable rate of return like you can with economic development. And I, I want to end with just one, one single example, if I may, real quick, and I'll, I'll close. I want to share with you the Valmere Project economic impact. And, and I hope the community, we can share that as well. Lot of communities talk about new jobs and they, they, they throw in this multiplier of payroll and it gets real confusing about how do you judge the economic impact of a, of a company? Well, Valmere has about $15 million a year in new payroll. So if you factor three and a half times, which is the average turn of every payroll dollar in a local community, you can see we're looking at about a $50 million a year economic impact just from Valmere. But I don't, I don't want to talk about that. I want to talk about the actual dollars that Valmere has spent locally in the community for you guys to hopefully take notice of and we can share. Valmere today, as of May, has paid the city of Dublin $576,929 for gas, fiber, water, and soup. $576,000, that's strong. Today, they paid Georgia Power $718,128. They paid $20,590 to Spectrum. Not sure what they're getting with Spectrum, Michael. I think they're some sort of cable or something. But I know our internet's being provided by the city of Dublin. They're paying, they've paid to date $274,760 in rent to local landlords for temporary housing, where they brought in people from all over the world. $274,000. This, this surprised me and I know it benefits the city because you guys collect the hotel motel tax. Today, Valmere alone has spent $455,910 in local hotels. $455,000, strong. $602,000 to the jointly-owned landfill that's owned between the city and county and the community via the Solid Waste Authority. They've spent $602,000. And then finally, $2,447,24 to local vendors, specialty welding companies, transportation companies, trash haulers, all of those vendors that have supported Valmere. So $4.7 million in direct expenditures from that one company to the local community and the regional service providers. And guys, that's just one company and we're just getting started. So when you think about your funding every year, we hope you look at that as an investment. And we're gonna continue to try to create those opportunities for you guys as service providers to sell more electric, excuse me, excuse me, more gas, water, sewer, and telecom. And, and also create those good-paying jobs at the same time. So thank you, guys, again. I'm here, can answer any questions for you if you have. And I'll provide this to Lance and you can have, please share it with, with your constituency. We'd appreciate it.
And you mentioned that Beatrice was gonna be leaving. But Beatrice, would you stand up? Beatrice Yerres. She's, she's been quite an asset for your group and meant a lot to us. We wish you the best as you strike out on a different pathway.
Any other questions?
Brad, did the incident that happened at Valmere, was it any kind of setback on that, on the operations?
I forgot to mention that, Mr. Yerres, thank you. There was a small issue out there with the boiler. And your team and the county's emergency response team met with them, went through a full day of training on how to deal with that in the future and not to necessarily put water on a boiler, which would create steam and cause all kinds of problems. So the city and the county emergency response folks, fire department, all of them met, had a good day of training. But that has been resolved and I think the community's gotten better at how do we handle their emergency response going forward. But we, we would hope that your team will continue to work with them on any future issues that may arise, but they certainly have so far. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks to our community, Dublin Macon Cardiology is celebrating 14 years of serving Dublin, Lawrence County, and all of Middle Georgia. At Dublin Macon Cardiology, we've got state-of-the-art cardiac care right here at home. 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Dr. Vega and his staff are here to serve you. New patients are always welcome and no referral is required. Walk in today to our chest pain center at Dublin Macon Cardiology, Hospital Drive, right here in Dublin.
All right, next on the agenda is a presentation by representatives of the Black Festival Committee. You would come up and state your name and, for the record, and tell us about what you're here for.
Good afternoon. My name is Frances Wells. I am the chairperson of the Dublin Lawrence County Black History Festival Community Committee Incorporated. It's a long name, but it's, it's all of us. First of all, I would like to thank the city and the council for your donation in our previous activities and pray that it will continue because it has helped us a great deal. As a matter of fact, we have given our over $3,000 scholarships this year alone. this year alone. Um, we have an upcoming senior citizen pageant, which will be held this Saturday at Dublin High School at 2:00 PM, and that's for all our older ladies, so they can show all their stuff as well. Also, this year, we have a young lady from Dublin High School who will compete in the Miss Georgia Black Festival. First time from Dublin. She will compete this year in Atlanta on July the 14th. Um, our expenditures for this year was $16,338, and our income was $15,437, which left us a negative of $901. However, when we collect our membership fees, which will bring us back to the $900, but we are soliciting more members. And just because it's at Black Festival doesn't mean that it's one person. We want to bridge the gap, so we want everyone to come and join and participate in all the activities, and we have activities throughout the year, and we'll, we will continue. Thank you. Any questions?
Ms. Wells, how, how much is a membership fee, and who do they, who would anybody needed, would need to contact if they wanted to join?
Membership fee is $30, and they can contact me. My number is 478-697-7858.
Thank you, Ms. Wells.
Thank you.
Next, I have down a presentation, uh, from St. Patrick's Committee to update the mayor and council. Ms. Yerres.
[coughing]
State, for the record, state your name and, uh...
Um, thank you, Mr. Councilman. My name is Beatrice Yerres, and I am on behalf of the, um, representing the St. Patrick's Festival Committee today. Uh, this past year, Will Curry and I had the pleasure of co-chairing the 2018, the 53rd Annual St. Patrick's Festival. And, um, as every year, it was another great success for our community with 47 unique events beginning on, uh, February 15th and continuing through March 24th. Uh, there was truly something for everybody to attend. The committee added, uh, five new events to the official St. Patrick's calendar, um, and one of them being the, uh, Munchies in the Park, which correlated with, uh, Visit Dublin's Sham Rock to, um, at Stubbs Park. Um, we also had, uh, several pageants, golf tournaments, fundraising, fundraisers, musical events, the balloon festival, awards banquet, and Super Saturday festivities as always. Um, to, in order to make the festival a success, it took a combined effort from the city, county, local business sponsorship, individual finance sponsors, and civic organizations, the media, and, um, the residents and visitors to Dublin Lawrence County. We would like to thank you so much for your, um, for your partnership and your sponsorship of, of this festival, not only this year, but in the past as well. The city of Dublin, Visit Dublin, Downtown Dublin Development Authority, city police, county sheriff's office were instrumental to the, um, to the success of this year's festival. From, um, Visit Dublin marketing and promoting the, the festival to, uh, the Downtown Development Authority assisting in facilitating, um, um, the Arts and Crafts Festival, and the city and county providing manpower support and law enforcement presence at, at many of the events. It was truly a team sport, and we are very appreciative of the mayor and city council for, um, as well as the citizens of Dublin Lawrence County for contributing and allowing us to grow, uh, this wonderful festival for our community. Um, in addition to our, um, public and private partnerships, um, the committee, as you all may know, um, is a volunteer organization that takes year-round planning. Uh, the 2017, 2018 Festival Committee was comprised of the following individuals: Past chairs Troy Wyndham and Alexis Hughes, co-chairs, uh, Will Curry and myself, along with, um, Ashley Vickers, Denise Creel, Robin Flanders, Jason Keaton, Debbie Frost, Froyce Hall, Sarah Dixon, Glenda Ricks, Judge Helen Harper, Kim Kennedy, Kathy Jones, Jeff Cannon, Patrick Thames, and Representative Matt Hatchett. Um, I, in wrap-up of the 2018, um, festival, I've got our budget and our proposed, um, for this year, as well as our proposed budget for next year, and our expenses for this year. Um, we, we were able to stay on budget on most items and, um, and had a pretty, pretty balanced, um, outcome in, you know, expense, uh, as compared to, to the past few years. And I would be happy to share this with you, all of you would like to look through it. Um, as we...
If you can just give a copy to, to Ms. Stanley, and she can submit it. She'll get it circulated again.
As you know, the festival takes year-round planning, so, uh, the 2018-2019 Festival, uh, which will be led by Jason Keaton and Ms. Debbie Frost, will begin in, um, in July. And, uh, the focus for, um, the 2019 Festival will focus on, um, expanding, um, the balloon glow at Southern Pines, which was a, a great success this year. We had two glows on Friday and Saturday, uh, the Arts and Crafts Festival and Munchies in Stubbs Park. Again, the success of this festival would not be possible without the support of the entire community, and throughout the years, the St. Patrick's Festival has become a celebration of our community that residents and guests have come to know, love, and cherish. We cannot thank the city of Dublin and our other first festival sponsors enough for their contribution. Thank you all so much for your time and, uh, for all your partnership and support. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from council? I thank y'all for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Holesman, he's straight up. He don't pull no punches. He's honest with you. Uh, he's very professional, and he makes sure you understand what's going on. If you don't ask a question, he will ask you to ask a question, because he wants you to be in the know, and I appreciate that about him. They show you exactly what to do. They make it kind of fun, and it, it's a breeze, really. The, it could be hard, but they make it easy.
Next item on the agenda, I'm going to ask, uh, Josh Powell to handle this, um, is the swearing-in of the newly-elected youth council member.
I think Ms. Holder going to introduce everybody.
Ms. Holder going to do it? Okay.
Greetings, council. Um, before introducing the 2018-2019 Youth Council members to you all, we would like to present for the first time the Julie S. Drigger Award. This new award is something that the Youth Commission selected to present to a, a youth council member who exemplifies leadership, youth engagement, and performance beyond set expectations and limitations. The recipient began as a young student with the dream of creating a positive change in her community. She has taken advantage of all of the city's youth programs by participating in the Dublin Lawrence County Teen Court, Youth Council, and now as a summer intern. This fall, she will continue striving to serve as a social change agent as a freshman at Spelman College in Atlanta, Georgia, with a dual major in psychology and Spanish. Congratulations to Ms. Sidney Price, our 2018 Julie S. Drigger Award recipient. We will now move forward with the swearing-in of our outstanding group of new young leaders for the 2018-2019 Youth Council. Please come to the front as I call your names. Mayor Kiana Jones. Ward 1, Councilwoman Journey Guyton. Ward 2, Councilwoman Jelicia McRae. Ward 3, Councilwoman Elizabeth Brooks. Ward 4, Councilwoman Tamaya DeVoe. At Large, Councilwoman Chastiana Jones. At Large, Councilwoman Robin Sorrent. At Large, Councilwoman Zailin Powell. At Large, Councilman Nathan Lumley. At Large, Councilman Trent Carr. At Large, Councilman Donald Harold in his absence. At Large, Councilwoman Kenzie McLean. Co-city Attorney, Ms. Kenzie Clark. Co-city Attorney, Ms. Tagwa Ali. City Clerk, Ms. Kristen Hubbard. Assistant City Clerk, Mr. Xavier Blash. And our historian/social media worker, Ms. Kamisha Miles.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the laws thereof, that I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia, not inconsistent therewith, that I will observe and obey the laws and ordinances of the city of Dublin, Georgia, that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties incumbent upon me as a member of the city of Dublin Youth Council fairly and honestly, and to the best of my skill and ability. So, help me God. And if you will say, I do so swear.
I do so swear.
Mr. Mayor Proten, I introduce to you your new Youth Council.
Well, congratulations to that. I know I speak on behalf of Mayor Best to say we're proud of y'all, and we just ask that you set the good example for others to follow, and I know you will. And, Ms. Castle, uh, you didn't tell your name when you got up here a while ago, but, uh, anyway, uh, the Holder is the advisor, and, uh, and so, she'll, she'll steer you right, too. So, thank y'all so much. All right, next item on the agenda is the second reading and the public hearing for the 2018-19 budget, and I need now to close the council...
I'll read it first.
Oh, I'm sorry. You do that first. All right, excuse me. Keep me straight.
All right. The, uh, this is the 2018-2019 budget, ordinance number 18-04, be it ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Dublin, section 1. It's estimated that following revenues, revenues will be available during the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2018, and ending on June 30th, 2019, to meet the foregoing appropriations according to the following schedules. General fund, $17,315,142. Hotel motel tax fund, $800,000. Splosh funds, $2,200,000. T-splosh funds, $8,730,000. Sanitation fund, $2,971,862. Water and sewer fund, $6,879,645. Gas fund, $12,206,645. Riverview golf fund, $589,108. Telecommunications fund, $542,900. Section 2, the following amounts are hereby appropriated for the operations of the city government's activities for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2018, and ending on June 30th, 2019, according to the following schedule. Have to get a, swallow a little bit here. General fund, $17,315,142. Hotel motel tax fund, $800,000. Splosh fund, $2,200,000. T-splosh funds, $8,730,000. Sanitation fund, $2,871, I'm sorry, $971,862. Water and sewer fund, $6,879,645. Gas fund, $12,206,645. Riverview golf fund, $589,108. Telecommunications fund, $542,900.
All right, so I think now I need to close the, uh...
Open up again.
The council meeting and open public hearing, and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of, uh, the budget. All right. Seeing nobody, I'll ask if there's anybody who is opposed to the budget to come up and talk about that. All right, seeing no, no one responding there, I now will close the public hearing and open back up the council meeting for action. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second. So, I got a motion from Mr. Jones and a second from Mr. Griggs.
Second.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Is there any discussion? And none? All in favor?
Uh...
Call or roll. Call or roll. Call or roll. Call or roll there, there, Ms. Stanley, please. I'll keep you straight. I'm learning.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilman Griggs?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Vote carries four to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Stanley. All right, so that passed. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance to amend chapters... No, uh, skip one?
10.
Okay. Discussion and, uh, action on a resolution accepting an agreement between Georgia Department of Transportation and the city of Dublin for the local administration of Stubbs Park Calhoun Street, uh, project.
Right. This is resolution number 18-10, a resolution of the city of Dublin, Georgia, binding through its mayor and council approving a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation relative to the Stubbs Park Road HD-0832 PI-0012218 project, and authorizing and directing the mayor and acting city clerk to execute the same.
Okay. Um, now this is where we, we go back to a, to a voice vote.
Right.
All right. So, I need a motion and a second on, uh, on that proposal.
Move for approval.
So move. A second.
So, I got a motion by... Who made the motion?
Edwards.
Mr. Edwards?
Davis, second.
And a second by Mr. Davis. All right, so any discussion? Hear none? All in favor?
Uh...
Any opposed? Seeing none, I now will close the public hearing and reopen the council meeting for comments and vote approval.
Make a motion that we approve.
A motion by Mr. Jones?
Second.
By Mr. Griggs, a second by Mr. Griggs. Any discussion? Need a roll call.
All right, Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Griggs?
Yes.
Councilman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilman Jones?
Yes.
Vote carries four to zero.
Thank you, Stanley. All right, so that passed. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of an ordinance to amend chapters. No, skip one?
Ten.
Okay, discussion and action on a resolution accepting an agreement between Georgia Department of Transportation and the City of Dublin for the local administration of Stubbs Park Calhoun Street project.
It's resolution number 18-10, a resolution of the City of Dublin, Georgia, by and through its mayor and council approving a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation relative to the Stubbs Park Road HD-0832 PI-0012218 project and authorizing and directing the mayor and acting city clerk to execute the same.
Okay. Now, this is where we go back to a voice vote.
Right.
All right, so I need a motion and a second on that proposal.
Move for approval.
So move, second.
So, I got a motion by, who made the motion?
Edwards.
Mr. Edwards?
Davis, second.
And a second by Mr. Davis. All right, so any discussion? Hear none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did I do it wrong?
No.
All right, next is item number 11. This is the first reading of an ordinance to amend chapter six entitled Building and Construction of the Code of Ordinances to the City of Dublin to Remove and Update Outdated Sections. Mr. Jones?
Ordinance number 18-06, an ordinance by the mayor and city council to amend chapter six, Building and Construction of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dublin, Georgia, to update outdated sections, to remove outdated sections, and to provide for an effective date and for other lawful purposes.
Okay, we'll have a second reading of that at our next council meeting. So, item number 12 is the first reading of an ordinance to amend the sign ordinance to allow for more multimedia signs in the city of Dublin. Mr. Jones?
It's ordinance number 19-05, an ordinance amending Article Two of Chapter Three, Sign Ordinance, Section Three-36, Subdivision C, Multiple Message Signs, Subparagraph 10. So, as to increase the number of multiple message signs allowed from thirty-five to fifty.
Okay, we'll have the second reading and vote on this at the next council meeting. So, item number 13 is a discussion and action on an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Dublin and Lawrence, Dublin Lawrence County Recreation Authority for the construction and operation of the Southern Pines Water Park. So, Mr. Jones, are you going to introduce that?
Yes, this is our agreement between the city and the Rec Authority on how the new water park that I know everybody's ready to see get started. Youth council, y'all ready to see it get started? Very much so. On how that'll work and if council has any questions or if Mr. Powell'd like to comment right just for a second on what's in the agreement, sort of how it'll run.
Essentially, the city, you've already awarded a bid for the construction of the water park and the next item on the agenda is approval of that contract with the contractor. The city is going to fund the operation, operational costs of the water park. The initial cost, you and we are funding the cost of construction of the water park through our agreement on the next item. And the Recreation Authority is agreeing to basically maintain and operate it for us. They will actually be the owner of the water park and they will ensure it. Any profits that generate from the water park will come back to the city. Any losses will be reported to the city and we will reimburse the authority for those. The authority will annually come and give a presentation of the water park budget, which will be separate from all their other activities. And this council will have to approve that before they can implement it. So, if you have any other questions, just let me know.
All right, so I need a motion now to approve this intergovernmental agreement.
So move.
Second.
All right, a motion by
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Jones. All right, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
We're here today at Bank of Dudley to discuss business loans. So many businesses and industries trust the Bank of Dudley for a variety of financing alternatives to suit your specific needs. From short-term loans to help with cash flow, loans to purchase equipment or facilities. At Bank of Dudley, we have commercial mortgage loans, capital improvement loans for construction or renovation. We can help with your business vehicle loans or for a small business line of credit. In other words, Bank of Dudley has your business covered. No matter what it is, you can trust the lenders at the Bank of Dudley with five convenient locations. East Dublin, downtown Dublin, Veterans Boulevard, Dudley, and Jeffersonville. The Bank of Dudley, Member FDIC and an equal housing lender.
Next item is number 14. This is a discussion and action on a contract between the City of Dublin and Swim Pro, Inc. for the construction of the Southern Pines Water Park. Mr. Jones?
You will remember you previously awarded the contract to Swim Pro. They were the low bidder and the same company that constructed the, what do you call it, splash in the borough. So, they're very, they've done a lot of water parks, do a wonderful job. And this is approval of the contract now between us and them to actually construct the park.
All right, you've heard the description, so do I have a motion and a second about the water park?
Second.
Motion for Mr. Griggs and a second for Mr. Jones. That we approve of this, any discussion? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It should be open for sure for next year's swimming season. Soon as everybody gets out of school next year, they can jump in the pool.
And just as a sideline, this was a thing that was in the original plans for the construction and development of Southern Pines facility to have a water park. And so, we're just now getting around to finishing up some unfinished business. So, I think it's going to be a really great thing, especially for our community, but I think we're going to draw people from all around. And we're going to look back and say that this is an historic night right here, that we have accomplished a lot. And there'll be a lot of enjoyment for a lot of people for a long time. So, thank y'all. All right, next is the mayor has and council have some board appointments that are periodically made. And I've got three of those that I'll be making tonight on behalf of the mayor. For the Main Street Dublin Merchants Association, this is a term of four years. We've asked Tony Sampson to come in and replace Melina Nation, who will not be able to serve again. And so, I'd like to put her name forward for that and we can vote on all these at one time, right? All right, and then the Ethics Board, which is three-year term. Angela Williams and Fred Williams, and they're not related, but those would be the suggested replacements there. Each of them have agreed to serve as well. And then the Dublin Lawrence Development Authority, which is a four-year term. We've asked Guy Cochran to serve again. And he has agreed to serve one more term and to help Brad with keeping us in the hunt on a lot of new, more projects down the road. So, those would be the recommendations and I'd just like to ask if we get a motion and a second to approve those.
So move.
Mr. Griggs is
Second.
Davis is second. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries for those to be appointed and they'll be notified right away. So, now is the time on the agenda for citizens' comments. Is there anyone who would like to address council? Please come up and state your name for the record and
My name is John Hall and I'd like to respond to comments that were made on May 3rd regarding the event that we, the Sons of Confederate Veterans, held on April 26. I've watched the video several times and I wanted to respond to those comments. The man from the NAACP talked about fear, intimidation, and was asking the mayor and city council to denounce what we did. At no time in the council meeting was it ever said why we were there. It was Confederate Memorial Day, which is a state holiday. Now, what I don't understand is Lance here has been a great guy all these years. And I've gone to Lance and said, hey Lance, we're going to do Confederate Memorial Day ceremony, celebration, whatever. And Lance is like, yeah, sure, great. I even have the email correspondence of this most recent one. And I'm not trying to put Lance on the spot, I'm just trying to say that at least somebody on the city council, city government is being fair with us as an organization. We're a nonprofit organization. We have about thirty thousand members across the world and we have three thousand members in the state of Georgia. I've been in the organization for twenty-six years. The last comment Lance said was, very welcome, have a good celebration. And then y'all sat here and that fella from the NAACP asking y'all to denounce us. Now, as far as the NAACP, they do not have, they do not own the compass of morality for the city of Dublin, Lawrence County, and my home state of Georgia. Mr. Curtis Edwards here said that we used lack of judgment. It's a state holiday. The Confederate monument has been here since nineteen twelve. That was the year that Captain Hardy Smith died, a Confederate veteran. I bought that home over eleven, about eleven years ago. The man from the NAACP talked about the Confederate flag, fear, intimidation, and hate and all that kind of stuff. Well, what about the people driving around Dublin and Lawrence County and the state of Georgia with a Confederate tag on the truck? That's a lot of hate going around. It's not hate, it's pride in our ancestors and our history. Now, the mayor said these words. It's an event that happened, he wants to deter it. He wants it to prevent it from happening again. He doesn't like it, he doesn't condone it. And he said about hanging the flags on the fence. Well, let me demonstrate you what was hung on the fence. This is a Georgia flag right here. This is what we hung over the fence. Now, did anybody tell me we couldn't hang this on the fence? The previous year, we did the same thing. We didn't hear from anybody complaining about it. I looked up the ordinance, there is an ordinance, you cannot hang signs on city fence. I get that, but did anybody tell us? No. The Downtown Development Authority, dealing with them. The Confederate monument, did the citizens of Dublin know what it took for us to get the monument cleaned? There's a man on the Downtown Development Authority that y'all put on there, a man named Jack Walker. And at a Downtown Development Authority meeting, when we are trying to donate money to get the monument cleaned, we are the Sons of Confederate Veterans, we are direct descendants of the soldiers. This man, Mr. Jack, said that we were Ku Klux Klan. Spence Mullis of Morris Bank, head of the Downtown Development Authority, said, y'all can spend your money on something else. We were totally excluded from having anything to do with getting the monument cleaned. I confronted both, this man over here, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Smith. The day of the election, I asked him, when are we going to get the monument cleaned? Well, guess what, it finally got cleaned by somebody else. We're just glad it got cleaned, that's a beautiful monument, it's the center of Dublin. It got cleaned in the middle of the night where nobody knew what was going on. There was no press coverage, nobody said a thing about that monument, it's been standing there over a hundred years. You would think that somebody would said, hey, the monument's been cleaned, but oh no, not a word. I just wanted to come here today to point out a lot of this. I am very disgusted and I am so tired across this country where anything Confederate is being torn down, destroyed, hidden, and covered up. The mayor in his comments, is he going to try to prevent us? Can y'all answer me this question? Is he going to prevent us from doing Confederate Memorial Day next year? I have pictures from the paper. Here's 2013. Myself and Rusty Henderson, in the paper, were waving our Confederate flags on Confederate Memorial Day. Here it is. Here's Wednesday, April 27th, 2011, the Curry-Harrow Daughters of the Confederacy hold Confederate Memorial Day celebration. Confederate flags in front of the theater. And now here we are in 2018 being condemned. We, the comments that were made treated us like we were criminals. We've done this almost every year. All we do is celebrate Confederate Memorial Day, a state holiday. So, I want to ask this question. What is the city council and the mayor Phil Best going to do to prevent us next year from holding a Confederate Memorial Day service?
I haven't spoken to the mayor about it, I don't know.
Well, y'all are city council. Apparently, y'all agree with him and Peter here, Curtis Edwards, Peter, like in the Bible, denying Jesus three times. I bet you got Confederate ancestors.
I do and I have a Confederate flag at State Captain Museum, I pay my name under. But if you'll read the comments correctly, instead of picking bits and pieces out, the lack of judgment I said was waving the Confederate flags and trying to rub it in the faces of people that you know would offend.
Rubbing it in whose faces? Do you know that we had
Across this country, people
You know what, sir? We had a descendant of Bill Yopp out here. What happened to the plaque for Bill Yopp, the Black Confederate? It was found over at the museum, kind of thrown away like garbage. She was there.
I understand the history, like I said, my family has history in it. What I said was a lack of judgment.
Like a judgment, we've done it for every year.
You have a different opinion than I do. I'm not going to deny my opinion. I have the right for my opinion, I'm going to stand by my values. Yes, I understand it's for history. I understand that perfectly well. I didn't say it was a lack of judgment celebrating Confederate Memorial Day. If you'll read the article and if you'll attend the meetings, you'll understand
I watched the video, I know exactly what you said.
Yes.
So, you're going to lead the charge to stop us next year?
No, I didn't say anything about leading the charge to stopping anyone, I just
I wrote a book about my Confederate ancestor. I wrote a book about my Confederate ancestors' letters. I know the history. And Mr. Davis over here, talking about, you know, segregation era and offensive and industries coming to Dublin and it's very depressing. What's depressing is growing up in a country where everything you grew up with is being changed, torn down, all because somebody is offended by something. Well, I get offended by things all day long, but I don't go down tearing other people's things down.
Mr. Hall, giving you some pretty good time, can you wrap it up in a couple of minutes?
Yes, I can. I think I've pretty much covered everything. As far as all good citizens don't support us, I highly doubt that. A lot of people do, a lot of comments were made. People, they just can't believe that the mayor and city council would condemn us for holding a Confederate Memorial Day service. And I just, I really came here to point out these and respond to them. And I'd like to know, again, are y'all going to prevent us from having a Confederate Memorial Day service next year?
We haven't even
Do we need to get a lawyer involved in this? Are y'all that desperate to cover up the Confederacy?
We haven't discussed it, but anyway, I think you've made a good point, you've made your point well, so
We are good people, we are not KKK. And I can't believe that Mr. Walker guy is still on the Downtown Development Authority. I want to thank Lance for being kind and nice to us all these years and treating us like other organizations get treated. We are good people, we're just proud of our ancestors. And one day of the year, we want to celebrate the Confederate monument and Confederate Memorial Day, a state holiday.
All right, you've made your point.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Lot of the other companies were putting business ahead of the patient. And the main thing that we wanted to be a part of was to make sure that Integrity Hospice, that we were constantly putting the patient first.
They're there for you, they're there for the patients. And they want to do what's in the best interest of everybody concerned.
We provide a lot of services for both the emotional and spiritual needs for these patients.
I strongly recommend Integrity Hospice and everything that they represent.
Date your name, young lady.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Julie Drigger and I'm here for the sole purpose of thanking the Dublin City Council, the Dublin Youth Council and its board and everyone that was involved in giving a scholarship, was it? An award in my name. An award, in my name. I sincerely appreciate you giving me my flowers while I'm living and can smell. Thank you, thank you, thank you so very much.
All right, is there any other citizen who would like to make a comment? If not, I'll call for council comments, and Mr. Davis.
I wanna thank everybody for coming out this evening, and I wanna thank the heroic firemen and the police that acted appropriately in saving lives in our city. And I wanna thank the council for being good stewards of the citizens' funds, and I just wanna thank everybody for coming out, and finally, we had the opportunity to pass constructing our water park. Swimming pool is something that the people in the city have wanted for such a long time, and as Councilman Smith said, the swimming pool was a project, a splotch project of Southern Pine, and it never did get completed. So, I'm just thrilled that it's going to get completed, and that's, those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilman Griggs?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and congratulations to Sergeant Garrett, and Bridges, and Williamson, and Lieutenant Sab for their involvement in all with the fires and arrest of the arson. Congratulations to the youth council. I'm sure y'all will have a great year, and Brad, thanks for your comments and updating us on the development authority. And I'd like to thank everybody for coming and showing up.
Councilman Edwards?
I'd thank everyone for coming, I'd like to congratulate the officers from the city police department, fire department, that received awards, and of course, Dublin Police Department, thank you for the security provided at every meeting that we have, and y'all, the police and fire, this is just a small thing compared to what they get through on every day, and I appreciate everything they go through every day for us, and keep us safe whenever can be said enough. Thank everyone who made their presentations tonight for each department, graduating the youth council, and swear them, look forward to the year. And Mr. Hall, I thank you for coming. That's what we're here for, we're here to hear everyone's comments, and we're here to sometimes agree to disagree, and sometimes all agree together, so thank you for coming out and standing up and speaking. That's what we're here for, and if anyone else has something to speak for this opposite we have, we welcome it. Like I said, we've had both sides come and speak, that's what America's about. And, you know, one thing we try to do is, we agree to disagree, and we move on, and we try to keep this community moving forward. So, I've got to say.
Mr. Jones? Councilman Jones?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, and special thanks to our police officers and firefighters, but Sergeant Stan Garrett, I'd like to thank you for your heroism. You know, we look at on TV, and we see some officers, you know, a lot of police officers get a bad name, but here we have an officer who risked his own life to go in and save lives, and you know, that's rare in time, you know. We saw on TV in Florida where the police officer was peeping around the corner when things would happen, but here we have an officer who saw something, immediately saw, and went to work before anybody else got, and like, thank you for doing that, and thinking about, not thinking about your life, but the lives of the others, and I'm real thankful for that. And like, and all the officers and everyone that was in charge, and a part of that, got the confession, Lieutenant Sab for getting the confession, and solving two crimes in one, so we killed two birds with one stone, so, you know. Always good to get two off the book at once, so thank you, thank y'all for the hard work that you do. I'd also like to thank everyone that came, and I'd like to say that youth council, thank you for being here. You see, we done doubled in size from the last two years, so we got a lot of work ahead of us, and look forward, and the two dollars on youth council year one, they finally get to see fruits of their label by seeing the dirt getting ready, and by next year, by trying to get it to come off, they'll see the water park that they suggested that we build for, so they get to see that, and the suggestion that came from them. And I'd also would like to recognize Mr. Curtis Coats and Rodney O'Neil in the audience, who's currently at this time, along with the Dublin Lawrence County Recreation Department and Southside Community, running a summer camp at Studd's Park, and have over eighty children, they're doing all kind of activities, you know, from art crafts to science, to they done partnered with the library and got computer classes, so I'd like to thank them for giving the youth of our city something to do during the summer, so we can't say there's nothing to do, and hope they to get bigger, and they get more partners, and next year to join along, so we make it bigger and get more youth involved in that. And like, that's it.
Beanie, if somebody wanted to participate in that, is there still time?
I think they done matched that, they gave that, what you got there?
We matched, uh, that student, I matched Curtis' name.
Gracious.
Wow. Yeah, like ninety, like ninety-five come out, and registered, and right now we got currently a hundred and fifty on the way.
Man.
Wow, that's great.
No, you give out the student, you give out your favorite cross, free. But we hoping to get more involved, more support, and more sponsors, so next year they could, like I said, you see the need for it, that's over two hundred youth that could have possibly been doing things, they got great activities, so I know the Recreation Department chipped in and said they would be, they would be contributing more next year. Hopefully, you know, we could find some funds or whoever else, and whoever else, and help them out, so they can make it bigger and get the youth something to do.
That's correct.
That's ages five to twelve is what they're dealing with, ages five to twelve. They get a free breakfast and free lunch.
There you go. I understand.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming, congratulate our employees on their awards, congratulate our new youth council, looking forward to working with you this year and having a great year. Also congratulate Ms. Sidney Price on receiving a Ms. Julie S. Drigger Award. Ms. Drigger, when we came up with the idea of this award, we couldn't think of a better person, you know, that deserved, you know, the recognition, because you've been so much to our city, you've done so much for our youth programs, you know, and establishing teen court program, helping us get the youth council program started. You always, you look out for everyone, and we appreciate that, and the youth that we recognize, we, you know, recognize those leadership abilities within them also, so we feel like that's a very special award, you're a very special person. So, thank you for everything that you do for the city and the county. And again, thanks everyone for coming.
Mr. Powell?
So oftentimes, we see life being taken for granted, and in many types of bad articles, it's really nice to have the awards that were given at the beginning of tonight's meeting, our firefighters and the police department acting together and working cooperatively, and doing what they do on a daily basis that sometimes we all take for granted, so I wanna say thank you to the firefighters and the police department for everything that you do, to thank you for what you do. Congratulations to the youth council, the new youth council, keep doing what you're doing. The fact that you're in this group, it's a good sign for your potential being formed, so congratulations to you. Next one.
Mr. Jones? Just one thing, echo everybody's comments, but I just wanted to let everybody know, I think it'll be publicized a lot recently, but y'all might be familiar with Smithsonian, the Smithsonian Institute, the museum, Smithsonian museums, and the Smithsonian magazine, but Smithsonian magazine, get tongue-tied if I say it, um, recognized the city of Dublin as one of the twenty best small towns in the country to visit in two thousand eighteen. Now, that, that is quite an honor. So, that's a magazine that goes worldwide, and it's great to be recognized in the state of Georgia when we do good things, and I think we are, but when a national magazine with that kind of reach, and that kind of importance recognizes Dublin, we're doing something right. We always, we got a lot of things we need to fix, there's no doubt, and I think the good thing about Dublin is we don't stop trying to fix them, we don't settle for where we are and say that's good enough, we always trying to do better, so thank you everybody, 'cause there's no way one person got that done. That's the whole city working together, and just thank everybody, and you can pull it up online, find that article and read it, it's great. Ms. Drigger's got a picture in there.
Well, you know, mayor doesn't usually talk much, but I'm not the mayor, so I'd like to thank everybody for coming, I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. You know, it takes all of us to make the city what it is, and all of us working to try to help make it better. I just really appreciate the contribution that everyone here makes, and those that you know make to make Dublin a better place. So, I hope everyone, and I'm just so delighted that we got youth that wanna take a leadership role. Now, the ball's in your court, you get to be the example, and think about setting a good example. That's, it's a wonderful thing, but it comes with a responsibility, and I know you're up to it, and major kudos to your parents, too, 'cause they've made you who you are. Always so proud of our firefighters and our police officers, you know, y'all just keep us safe, and I'm thankful for that. And it seems like what the mayor does is pretty dang easy, but you can see this old Clemson boy struggle with it a little bit tonight, so I appreciate y'all bearing with me, and I hope that y'all will go and go safely and come back next week, our next council meeting, which has been a couple weeks, and God bless you all, thank you.